I'll, I'll.
It's fine if you're not. I'm gonna be there from about after.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and councillors. I'm sorry for the delay, but unfortunately the traffic couldn't let me get here any quicker. So I'd like to open the meeting of the Finance Committee to be held today on the twenty twelfth of October. Can we just do some housekeeping, please? If the fire alarm does go off, it means there is a fire and our nearest escape routes are through that door, through the window or through the back. If you need to comfort break, there are toilets in the corridor. Thank you. Twenty, I'll start the agenda now. Twenty one, twenty six, one to receive apologies of absence. Can you speak up a bit, please? Okay, thank you. Twenty one, twenty six, two, to note declarations of interest and request for dispensation to discuss or discuss and vote on a matter in which a member or co-opted member has a disclosive pecuniary interest or non-pecuniary interest. Councillors, anything? No, thank you. Twenty one, twenty six, three. This is the open forum and questions concerning items on this agenda may be put to the council by the public during this period. Matters which, in the chairman's view, require debate and audit discussion will be referred to the next committee council meeting as appropriate. The public forum is restricted to fifteen minutes unless the chairman allows otherwise. Members of the public, do you have any question? None? Thank you for that. That closes the public forum. Twenty one, twenty six, four, to approve and sign the minutes of Hanforth Parish Council, or have we gone? Yes, thank you. Finance Committee held on the thirteenth of July, twenty twenty one. Councillors, if we can just go.
Can we just make a session chat, see what we think?
Yeah.
Shall I speak into the microphone?
I am.
I'm thinking that rather than going through every page, if someone's got an issue, they raise it when we discuss it as the item, rather than going through every page. Thank you.
As per councillor Smith, has anybody got any comments or issues they wish to raise with the previous minutes? No. Can I have a proposer to accept them, please? Councillor John Smith, can I have a seconda? Councillor Julie Smith. All those in favour? Unanimous, Clark, thank you. Who wasn't? Oh, sorry, I beg your pardon. Neither Sam nor Kerry were there. Okay, thank you very much. I thought the way. Twenty one, twenty six, five, recommendations for expenditure to retrospectively approve the following items. None. Item B, to consider any other recommendation requests. None. Twenty one, twenty six, six, to review the current budget position. All councillors should have had an up-to-date copy of the budget. Councillor Smith and I went through it line by line and I know that some amendments have been made. However, we didn't get any other amendments from any other councillor unless you wished to raise them now.
May I raise some, please? I have to say that I'm disappointed that you've reduced the training budget, particularly because we have two new councillors. And having been on two courses this year, I found them both extremely useful. And I think that the budget is too low. I'd like that to be reviewed. The second one is a query over the rent for the garage. Do we really need to have this garage at a cost of one thousand and something? I can't, just for some reason, this thing is frozen, I can't see there. Seven hundred. So that's another query. We have maintenance on the war memorial that comes to two thousand pounds. What does that cover exactly?
Now, usually the war memorial doesn't belong to the government, but the War Memorial Community Foundation wish to have a budget on a matter in the near future. And so I put in somebody in their name. I can only guess, because I can't quite remember what the one was on.
Right, thank you. Can we please, we have reduced the Greener Hanforth with the question mark from ten thousand to two thousand, which disappointed me. I don't, I'd like to get rid of the title Greener Hanforth because we haven't got it anymore. So I'd like it to be something like climate, climate budget or something along those lines. But it has slashed the budget somewhat, so I'm disappointed at that. And the last, but not by no means least, the car parks, the fifteen K, what's that for? It says car parks, fifteen thousand. Are we referring to? Yeah. Can you use your mic?
I believe I'm right in saying that that was for potential costs for devolving the car parks to the council. If Cheshire East do devolve them, there may be an expense that we have to meet. We don't know whether they're going to do it. It was on the books, it was on the agenda for Cheshire East. We may get more information on it as we start discussing other devolution issues.
So we're talking about four car park, no, is it four or three? Which ones?
School Road and Wormsley Road. Wormsley Road just past the Freemasons.
All right, so the one behind Spar is.
That's owned by, that's owned by, I missed.
Clarify that, thank you. There was my comments and I'd like the councillors to take them on board, please.
Councillors, I don't know why we reduced the training budget, to be honest, and I quite agree with councillor Moore that we raise it back up to a thousand. Have we got any comments from any other councillors? Because point was that we do have two brand-new councillors here that could possibly need training. Any comments, please, councillors?
We always have the facility chair to raise the budget, don't we? We have that facility. So I see no problem if the Chair of Finance agrees, if we increase it to a thousand or add another thousand on to the existing, to fifteen hundred. But that considered acceptable?
Can I have a proposer councillors for, proposer councillor Sullivan, seconda? Councillor Moore. Clark, can you please amend that line of the budget, please? And going back to the Greener Hanforth, because the money had not been used, and I quite agree, we should have an environmental stroke climate change. So we can put another line in. However, we can't just put in a cost where somebody picks it out of their head. So what I would like is that councillor Moore is in charge of the, she chairs the planning and environment. If she could come up with some costings, we do have contingency plans and we can put a line in. Can I have comments from other councillors before we vote on that amendment?
I agree, Chair, that it is an important line on the budget. We have perhaps reacted a little bit to the way it was, that ten thousand was arrived on that budget line from a previous council. But we've already spent, I think, was it seventeen hundred on the reports that were issued by Chris? And it's certainly not going to be just that amount, I don't think. So there is a requirement for why I agree. And happy if you can come up with some figures here.
Well, yes, I certainly will come up with some figures. I want to involve the local schools and like. So, yes, happy to do that.
Thank you councillor Moore.
Can I please raise a point about the community grant scheme? Is that okay? Sorry, who you done? Is that in regard to, obviously, the grants that people can put forward? What's the current cap on that, just to clarify? Okay, is there, is there any plans to potentially increase that? I know previously, I just think we've got an awful lot of amazing community groups in Hanforth. And I think this grant opportunity, I don't think we advertise it enough, if I'm being completely honest. I know historically we've done some fantastic stuff with the Scout Hub, where we did the disabled toilets, you know, with the youth groups and certainly with other places like the Time Out Group. I think if we could agree, or I don't know, but potentially look to potentially upgrading that a little bit, I think a thousand pounds is a great amount of money for a group. But I think perhaps we could suggest we could look at it on a case-by-case basis and not necessarily put a cap on it. I think we might get more interest. I don't feel like as a council we get a lot of people coming to us and I think we need to promote that more, especially even on like the Facebook pages, you know? We've, we've got this money, let's, we're here for the community. You know, let's, I know we've done the trains and stuff like that, which has been well received. I know the public have loved that because they all love the trains. But I think we should promote it much more, you know, we are here as an asset to help you out.
I totally agree and it is something that we want to be able to get out there, especially on our Facebook page. However, in our grant application, there is an opportunity to apply for more than a thousand if you can justify what it's going to be spent on. We felt that a thousand pound, because it had been reduced to eight hundred, so we've put it back up to a thousand. And we have looked favourably on other associations that have come with a greater grant application than what we first assumed. I know that the disabled toilets was one of the Scouts, but we actually got that grant back because they managed to get it under the disability allowance. So we will look favourably on any grant application, providing it supports the criteria of the grant application.
So I think, you know, let's, let's get it out there, let's, let's tell people. Sorry, Julie.
I was just going to say, I totally agree with what you're saying. I championed the putting it back up to a thousand. It was actually reduced to five hundred, wasn't it, by the previous council? Yeah, but it should. But I'm still of the opinion, as I was then, that anybody looking for funding to set up a group is looking for more than a thousand pounds, so they won't even consider ours. And I agree with Kerry that we should, we shouldn't have a cap on it. We should invite everybody to. At the moment, I've got three potential applicants. One for a special needs youth group that one of our residents is setting up. We've already got some funding from a local charity. Another for a domestic abuse group who I've been talking to and I'd like them to apply for a grant, because these are all important things that we should be spending the residents' money on. And I agree with you, yeah, I think we should remove the cap and let's get it out there. It doesn't mean to say that we, we assess each grant application on its merits. But if it's preventing, if that thousand pound cap is preventing people coming to us to ask for more, then I think we need, we need to consider them. I think it's too restrictive.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to make a point that, yes, we have to be seen to be managing our funds. However, in the past, there has been situations where someone has come in for a grant and they've made, they've made us aware that what they're asking for, that thousand pounds, won't necessarily fulfil everything, but they're looking to get grants from elsewhere. We have the ability to change that number. If we, if we're suitably moved by what the grant is going to be for and what they're doing with it, then we can always say, rather than a thousand, yes, we will consider it another two, another two hundred, another two fifty, whatever it might mean, to mean that they get the full amount that they required.
So with that in mind, sorry, Julie, so with that in mind, could we then promote ourselves that, okay, we have a cap, however, we will, it's a difficult one, because I, I'm with Julie. I don't like the fact that there's a cap on it. I think it does put people off and I know it does. And I'm sure you've had experience of that as being a ward councillor. I just feel like people should know, it's like with the disabled, I remember that one, you know, that was when I was previously on the council, the Scouts came along and they were, and, and I knew, as you would have done, Cynthia, of a particular young boy at the time, who wouldn't have been able to join the Beavers and stuff. And, and on that day, you know, we said, hang on a minute, let's, let's just, you know, let's just do this. But the Scouts or the Beavers or Cubs or whatever, they're very good, they know that, they know the parish council, they know the town council, whatever you want to call it. There are so many organisations in the local vicinity who don't, and they won't approach us, because like you said.
Okay, councillor Sullivan.
That's no point.
If you know of anybody that you feel could benefit from a grant or any councillor that can benefit from a grant, get them to apply with what the grant is about, how it will serve their community or their group, and let's look at it favourably. I'm not going to say that, you know, the domestic abuse, it's the first I've heard of it. I don't, I don't even know anything about it. The same with, I do know about the SEN because I know the local charity that they're going to. But unless they apply to Ashley, which is the correct procedure, we can't do anything about it until it comes to full council.
We're not saying that, we're not saying, you know, that they shouldn't apply. What was, what I think Kerry's saying, but what I'm saying is that I don't think we should say grants up to a thousand pounds. I think we should just say, community grants are available and assess each one on its own merits.
I think the problem with that is that we might get someone who needs eight thousand quid and they take most of the grant available that we have.
Yeah, but then we.
But that, what, that would mean that there's only going to be, you know, two potential organisations.
But then we assess it and we say, no, sorry, but if you want fifteen hundred pounds, we can, we can point you in the right direction to get some match funding or, you know, for that.
Agreed, and that's what we can do. What I would suggest is that the people, that these groups that we're talking about don't necessarily know what is available. They may have a shopping list of equipment that they need that comes up with a figure. What about if those groups or individuals email the clerk and say, this is what we're looking to do, what grant would be available as a pre-stage, so that they don't have to go through the, the whole grant procedure, but they can get an indication of what they may be able to get for it?
So remove, remove the cap?
No, no, we've still got a cap because we have, we have.
Why? I don't understand, the cap is there. And assess each one on its own merits. And that will encourage more people to come to us if they want twelve or thirteen hundred quid and they see a cap of a thousand, they're not going to bother because.
No, that's why, that's, can I just say, can I just say, just one minute, that by putting that extra layer in, they can be made aware that, yes, you might need fourteen hundred. The grant's currently set at a thousand, but in certain circumstances, the council will consider paying the fourteen hundred. But we've got to have a cap at some level to show financial probity, haven't we?
We haven't.
We have to show that the council is not just pushing money out as fast as it can.
Then I don't, I just think we'll still be in the same position as we are now with people not applying. Well, they're not applying, Cynthia, so how do you account for that?
Those three details that you've just said, have they applied to Ashley?
Not yet, no.
Well, there you go. So how do you know that they want more than a thousand?
Well, I don't, but if they, if they do and they know the cap's a thousand and they want fifteen hundred, they're not going to.
Well, I'd rather have a thousand pound and, and try and start it up and look elsewhere for match funding. But I feel that we do need a cap on it to prevent people coming forward and just applying for something which recently happened and it would have taken all of our grant budgets if it had been agreed.
Yes, but it wouldn't have been agreed, that's what I'm saying. We get, we get a grant application for two thousand pounds and we discuss it and we assess the grant application and, and then say, no, all we can give, it's a thousand.
That's not going to change. We will discuss it fully before it's exact.
So can I just make a? Okay. Can I make a comment?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I appreciate what's, what's being said. Apologies if this is me being new to the process, but if, if an application was to be made for, say, two or three thousand pounds, there is, there is no obligation as a council for us to approve the full amount. We can approve as much as we want. And if, if, if we get to kind of three quarters of the way through the year and we've got spare money left in the budget, we can revisit previous applications, right, that we haven't?
Yeah.
And then revise it. We have, we have, we only spent sixty percent of our budget kind of coming in towards the end of the year. We then reconvene and we consider all the applications that we haven't funded fully.
Yeah.
As the clerk has just mentioned, we're not here to discuss individual policy on the budget.
Okay.
We're here to discuss the budget as.
Please, can I just make one last comment? Everybody said about people not knowing who we are and raising our profile. Could we not send from the council to all the local groups a simple, a simple letter, we just put together who we are, what we do, how we can help, and send it out and even take them ourselves, I'd be quite happy to go around and just introduce us and say, here we are. A very simple way to do it.
Thank you councillor Moore. Could you put that in motion, please, Clark? Or do we have to vote on it?
A letter.
A letter to all associations in the locality of Hanforth. Yes, please. Thank you. Is there any other comments on the budget? Can I have a proposer to accept the figures, please, with those that are being amended? Councillor John Smith proposing, seconda? Councillor Susan Moore, seconded. All those in favour?
Abstained.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Right. To receive a copy of the latest bank reconciliation, month end September twenty twenty one. You should have all had a copy from the clerk today. It just depends when the actual statement comes through. Are there any comments from councillors, please?
I'd just like to confirm what the guaranteed sum is on deposit. Should the bank go bump? Is it eighty-five, eighty-five thousand, the government guarantee?
Yes, it is.
Eighty-five?
Yes.
So we're within that with all our accounts?
Can I have a proposer to accept the bank reconciliation, please? Councillor Sullivan, seconda? Councillor John Smith, thank you. Twenty one, twenty six, eight, to approve the quarterly income and expenditure account for quarter two. And I understand this to be councillor Smith, if he was able to complete it. Oh, sorry, sorry, I missed, yeah. Are there any comments on the income and expenditure for quarter two? No. Can I have a proposer to accept the expenditure account for quarter two? Councillor Millward, seconded, councillor Sullivan, thank you. Can we have a, a vote to accept it, please? All those in favour? Against? Unanimous, thank you, Clark. Twenty one, twenty six, nine, report from relevant councillor regarding internal control for quarter two, and I believe this is councillor John Smith.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, we had, I was in the office with Ashley yesterday and we're going through a number of things. But as we've got the auditor due shortly, we thought it'd be a good opportunity to allow him to do that quarterly review, as quarterly check, as we've been doing it ourselves. So why not have it done correctly, you know, fully by the auditor required?
If the clerk's happy with that, I'll go along with it. Okay, thank you. Can I have a proposer to accept that amendment that the internal auditor will do our six monthly set of accounts? Councillor John Smith, seconda? Councillor Susan Moore, all those in favour? Against? It's unanimous, Clark, thank you. To review and make recommendation to full council regarding the budget proposal for financial year twenty-two, twenty-three. We've just talked quite a lot about the budget and obviously we've taken on board some amendments that we need to look at. Can I have a proposer to accept this budget, please? Subject to the amendments, yes. Councillor John Smith, seconda? Councillor Susan Moore, all those in favour? Against? Abstentions? Okay. Twenty one, twenty six, eleven, to review and make recommendation to full council in respect of setting the precept for financial year twenty-two, twenty-three. I have been through this with the Chair of the council and we did some calculations and I understand that it would be approximately another three pound twenty a week, a year, sorry, three pound twenty a year to put that per household, to put the preset up from eighty-five to ninety-five. Can I have comments from councillors, please?
What was your, you, based, what was that based on? What did you find that you needed to increase, if that's okay?
Yeah, the reason for the increase is the council has now taken over Remembrance Sunday. That includes the traffic management, which is a couple of grand, and it includes the pipe band. And it comes out to about two thousand five hundred. That is a, a cost that the council didn't have. On the community budget. Right. So that was. So that was for the Remembrance Sunday expenditure. We have a ten grand expenditure on the bus service that we are, we were not expecting last time we put the budget together. But the one thirty bus that we agreed back in March, I think, where we would pay our share along with the other parish and town councils along the route, that's another ten grand that wasn't there originally as a cost. And we also have the potential issue of eight thousand pounds due for payment for an expense that we certainly don't believe we should have, but we may well have. So we have to take that into consideration. So we're looking there at twenty.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Is that the average, Clark, a hundred and forty is?
It's been roughly.
Yeah. We are, we are, we are spending money, is what we're here to do, we're here to move that precept on behalf of the people of Handforth. And we're spending it. Just as a, as a comparison between Alderley Edge being a comparable size, smaller council. We haven't raised the precept in Handforth since parish council came up eleven years ago. Alderley Edge, they started off at ninety thousand. And in the last ten years, they've increased it that many times that it's gone up to a hundred and eighty thousand. So as a comparison, we're being quite economically prudent. But this is a, it's an instance that, as I said before, that the increase per household will be about three pounds twenty per household per year, which works out twenty six pence per calendar month for the household. Which, it, it gives a bit of perspective on what, what we're requesting. But I believe that we've got a good reason for it.
Can I just say, sorry, go on, sorry. Sorry, councillor Sullivan, oh, sorry.
Sorry, just wanted to, from, from my, from my knowledge, on the, on the preset increase, is that in, in relation to people, each household's tax band? Okay, so the higher the tax band, that's the average? Great, okay. Yes, so the lower tax band properties will receive, contribute less? Okay, thank you.
Can I just also advise councillors that I looked at this in great depth? Because, don't forget, we're getting the garden village, the fairways. But the calculation the Cheshirees use to determine what precept, to decept, to determine the formula is extremely complicated. And we had to base our figures on how many properties, John? I haven't got that figure. Three thousand one hundred now. We know for a fact there's more properties. But Cheshirees use the old census, because we haven't got the new dates, the new details of the new census. Now, if within the next six months we get the new census and we know how many properties, we can relook at it, but we need to be shown that we don't want not to have money to do what we want to do. Anyway, comments from any other councillors, please?
My comment was just regarding what you said about Alderley Edge. And I think it's important that people know that obviously an awful lot of money was input to, is it Festival Hall? Which you'll know an awful lot about. So to be honest, I was going to fire a question at Ashley, if everyone's okay with that. How, in, in your opinion, how do you feel about us increasing that? Or the fact that we could potentially start with a lot smaller of a budget for the next financial year? Right, okay, thank you. I just wanted Asher's input on that, because obviously he's our, our CFO, so.
Yeah, yeah, what I would say is if we want to raise the cap on grants, for example, we need to raise the precept. It's quite straightforward. Yeah, got to pay for it. The other thing that Cynthia mentioned is about the new houses coming in. There, I, I was one of those. I, I had a misconception that if the still money starts coming in, that doesn't go into our current account. That goes into capital projects for, for the village, infrastructure, capital project type, infrastructure, not. Yeah, it's not party time, no. So it would be, yes, if we wanted to spend money on the football pitch at the back here, that would be the correct sort of thing to do. Okay, thanks, Sue.
Any other comments, councillors? Any other comments from any of the councillors? Can I have a proposer that we increase the precept to ninety five thousand? Or next year, twenty two twenty three? Councillor John Smith proposed, can I have a seconda, please? Councillor Susan Moore, all those in favour? Unanimous, Clark. That's the close of the meeting. Thank you all for coming. We will have a five-minute comfort break before we start the planning meeting.